The most common time that you can help somebody is when they're down. And there are a lot of people that are down because they're at the end roads and they don't know where to turn. That when people come into any of our branch locations, that you outreach your arms and you help them. And you see what their problems are. I think that's what we brought to this industry. I think that's what we brought to this community, that we try to outreach to the people that need us the most, and we're here to help serve them.
Good evening and welcome to the Spencer Board of Selectmen Regular Business Meeting of August 11, 2014. If anyone would rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Minutes, Business Meeting of July 14th, Workshop of July 21st, and Special Meeting of July 28, 2014. Did everyone get a chance to review them? Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Would anyone like to come forward and be heard in citizen's input? Yes, sir.
My name is Kurt Nordquist, Gale Drive Spencer. I just want to have a comment to make tonight. I lived in town for 41 years here, and I've been involved. I go to town meetings. I'm just upset that this Finance Committee, I know there's some good people on there, I'm not trashing them, all of them, but there's some people on there that will come up at the Selectmen's meeting and point fingers, "The voters gotta go, the voters gotta do this." They go and vote in the ballot box or the town meeting. And when they vote, that's their choice. Not to be trashed by these people saying that you gotta go there and just trash them. And I just take exception to that. And after watching last week, it just put me over the edge. So what they used to do, years and years ago, is they used to look out for the town as a whole and for the taxpayers. I find that now it's kinda hot. I don't know why they're there, just like I say, there's some good people, I'm not trashing them all, but they just support everything that comes down the pike. Everything to raise taxes, they're all for. I haven't heard one in the last four or five years that they had any questions. And if they do, they say one opposed and eight in favor or whatever. I would like to see them get up there and tell their reasons why they disapprove of this alcohol. How come they're against it? But I guess they don't have any backbone, so I guess that's why they wouldn't do that. And I also find out that some of these people on there don't even pay taxes. And they are citizens, but they don't pay taxes like the rest of us. So why would you care about the people who are paying the freight when they're not paying the freight? So just, you know, just my opinion, and I'm sure the people in town watch us on TV, sees this, and follows them and whatever. When they go to town meetings, when they go vote in the ballots, the Finance Committee doesn't count because they don't listen to them. So wake up. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Anybody else that could come forward? If you could state your name and address for the record.
Herr Corson, 6 Meadow Brook Road. I have a question on the override. You're asking for the $484,000. By the time the vote is taken in November, 1/30 of your fiscal year will be passed. What's gonna happen to the $166,000 that will not be used in the 484?
It's this way, Pat, is even if the override passed, it doesn't have an influx on this year's budget. That already has been cut. This would take, transpire next fiscal year. So it doesn't have a bearing. The 484 is what you would need to put these services back in. As of now, as you know, they've been cut. So that's already instituted.
Okay, you can't take them back. So you have, you have from November until June with $484,000, correct?
It doesn't go, it won't go effective immediately.
Won't go effective when, this was supposed to be effective July 1st, wasn't it?
On what?
The 484.
The cuts? The cuts already are in place.
I know the cuts are in place, but the 484 was starting the fiscal year July 1st, correct?
It won't take effect until next fiscal year, I believe. Am I wrong in that?
Well, the fiscal year starts in July. So I think I understand what you're saying is that, how do you make up for the?
We have four months that will have elapsed. July, August, September, and October. The voting is taking place in November, in the state election, okay? You can't take back the PACs cuts. You can't take back any of the other hardships that the town has endured for the four months. So when was the $484,000 supposed to be effective? July 1st of this year or July 1st of next year?
My understanding is, and I'll get clarification from Adam, that it wouldn't take effect until the coming fiscal year.
Mr. Chair, we did discuss this, and you know, Pat is correct, and we anticipated this point, that technically speaking, that 484 reflects the needs over the whole year, you know, from programs to positions to materials. And so you're right in asking that. We had a discussion about that, whether or not, whether or not it's appropriate to present a figure which reflected the remaining portion of the fiscal year, which is money will be spent in. And the decision was made to go with the full amount because we wanted a number that would reflect a full year's needs. Because if we, for example, just so that we would avoid the misunderstanding whereby, say if we did 2/3 worth of the library cuts, and so we got the library back to where it was, then next year, people are gonna expect, would expect an entire year to be funded by that same amount. So the idea was, let's put in a number, use figures that reflect the needs of the whole fiscal year. What's gonna happen in the end? And this came up with Adam as well, and I'm glad this came up, just so we clarify, and it's not like we're creating slush funds or anything like that. It's, some of that money will inevitably come back to the town in terms of, we call it, when the money's turned back to the, like if departments don't use the whole budget, something is a surprise, or a number of things can go well, or it's not as expensive, the program might not be as expensive as originally anticipated. So that money comes back as part of the free cash that the state certified. And that's what ends up funding our capital budget at this point.
So this $160,000 plus be considered free cash?
Well, I don't think it's gonna be that much because not everything is prorated over the whole year. Some of those things that, for example, the improvements to the parks and rec that are in there, we couldn't do them in the fall, but now we can do them in the spring. So some things are just gonna be delayed. When it comes to positions, for example, the light equipment operator at the highway station, there's 2/3 of the year left, so it's not a full year salary. So 1/3 of that salary will come back in the form of ultimately free cash. It'll be part of the excess that we have at the end of the year. But I think it's important for people to know, you know, just what you're saying.
No, we're, four months have passed.
That's right. You're absolutely right. And so it's, technically speaking, it's not, you know, it's too late to apply it to the whole year because if four months are over. So, but the decision was made to use a number that reflected the needs of the whole fiscal year. So when we get to this point in our budgeting next year, we have a line already in there. We have a budget from last year which reflects a full year's needs.
I know at the last meeting you had discussed a lesser amount for the override.
Yes, we had.
I watched my meetings when, really late when they were on the cables.
And that's what John brought up last time was, if you didn't need all that money to fund, but the trouble is you need to fund the entire year. And that's what sent us back to where we were. So John wasn't correct when he asked that question. You asked the same one, Pat.
Yeah, 'cause I know, I'm a member of the board in town, and when we have excess cash, we have to turn it back in.
If you don't use it, that's correct.
Town.
So it'll essentially add to our free cash next year. So it's not lost, it'll come back in the form of some funds for capital expenses, but just for, you know, for, so that there's no, there's nothing hidden, it's all, you know, very much out in the open. What you're saying is technically correct.
You raise a good point. I mean, it was explained to us, and folks still have a question. So in the upcoming presentations we have for cable and any other communications, we should make that clear, a little more clear.
And Adam will be back by, you know, will be back. We can, we can say, you know, what portion of this will, especially that related to salaries.
What percentage?
Can't be, won't be used this year, but will be, needs to be part of our planning for next year.
Yeah, 'cause the summer programs will be coming to an end in a couple more weeks when school resumes, so they can't use what would have been budgeted for the four months.
Right. But even, even the PACs and recs, just so you know, and I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to go down to Old Gara, but recently got trashed again, so. Yeah.
Well, thank you, General.
Thank you.
Thanks, that was good.
We'll make sure that's clarified, over and over again. Carl, coming up. Mr. Carl.
I was upright. That's a good thing.
Carl Podolski, 113 Meadow Road. If that's the case, you've got $160,000 left over. Why did they, why don't they go for debt exclusion instead of override? Override is forever.
Yep. Well, debt exclusions are usually, are used for capital, capital projects such as the road project. You can't use it for?
It's a one-time expense, Carl. They can use that for, you can't use it for, you know, every year.
Recurring expenses.
Yeah.
Like salary.
Who knows? Maybe next year the town will be in better shape.
Are you dreaming? Carl, this is the real world, okay?
I know, I know.
It ain't gonna get any better, it's gonna get worse. It never gets any better. Okay?
Well, if it does get better, then again, you'll see our free cash numbers probably improve, and then there's such a backlog of capital requests from the various departments.
And it hasn't done five years.
But we get, we get the point, but you can't use debt exclusion for this, for these override reasons.
Not for recurring expenses.
Well, that $160,000 that's left, supposedly that's left over, that comes back as free cash, if you get that much, where will that go? What will you use it for?
Capital expense.
We'll go to, we'll go to town meeting and spell out specifically what that'll be used for.
Some capital expense that we've put off for the, you know, the last four or five years. Every time we have a capital expense, it gets washed away, so.
Snow and ice always grabs some of it.
Yeah, some of it will probably go in snow and ice, depending what the winter is, Carl.
Well, anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
All this needs to be part of the presentations that we make, you get to make clear where the money's going and where it's coming from.
Anybody else that could come forward?
John Bailey from 20th Park Mechanics Street. Back about the grills again. At this point, I still haven't had the meeting with the Disability Commission, which was promised by the end of last month. And today, I brought, these are pictures that were taken today, and they continue to violate.
I still have them myself on the way.
This is a violation. This is why the grills need to go. They think it is a public sidewalk, it's part of civil life that you're allowed to do, walk down the sidewalk. After this was taken, they sat there for hours. I went to go back through, and they had slid them into the middle of the open area so that they could take them out of the boxes, so they could put them in the store. None, none of these grills should be out there. Two of the buildings that they're in front of have been condemned. And they just openly violate the ADA whenever they want.
Who's the chairman of that disability?
Billy and I.
Okay.
I asked Billy to set up a meeting. I think the last time Johnny took your information, the problem is, is vacation, we couldn't get enough members to hold the meeting.
First requested this last year.
And, you know, in all fairness, Mr. Bailey, let me just say this to you. You told me you talked to the Department of Justice, you gave me their, let me speak, please. You gave me their number. I spoke to the Department of Justice. No violation. I've been to the Architectural Access Board in Boston, the director who was the one who filed the lawsuit against the town, okay, to bring this about, there's no violation. I've done surveillance out there. Excuse me. I've done surveillance out there. I have pictures of you walking by, unless they're in the middle of the sidewalk, there is no violation. If there is a loading zone, they do have X amount of time to unload. So, I mean, we've been down this road, and I promise you, when we can get enough members, you can come in.
When I spoke to Mr. Hopkins, he said that under Massachusetts law, they're allowed to put the grills out there, but they are not allowed.
To block the sidewalk.
To use the path.
Of travel.
Of travel.
Right.
For business.
You are right.
This is a public sidewalk, they do not own it. Their state and federal funds were used to pay for it, they're not supposed to use it. They do not have a department in their store for the grills. They choose to use the public sidewalk as an extension of their business.
You're right.
That is not legal.
And again, I can tell you, and I've been down this road with you, John, and I'll do anything for you to help you through it.
Department of Justice has already been asking me to file.
And that is your, that is your prerogative.
The town, they co-defendant, and they are also subject to fines, which is why I've avoided doing it.
I mean, and we're trying to, trying to come up with a solution. I've been there.
He has actually added more grills and more obstructions.
When was that taken, John?
This was taken today.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's.
What time did you come up, John?
I see it on Main Street.
What time did you come up?
Just before, just before the meeting.
And I will go back there again, but again.
It's a daily basis. Every day they're unloading trucks, they're blocking paths of travel.
Which, honest, John, I understand, but it is a loading zone.
At AAB, did you include the fact that it's connected to a bus stop when you were telling them that?
I did tell them the bus stop was there.
And did you tell them about the parking situation? Because when they spoke to me.
John, you wanna hire you, or you wanna give me a chance? I spoke to the director in Boston, and that just happened last Friday. So I don't know where else you want me to go, other than, you're more than welcome, we will have the meeting, I promise you that, and, at that point, but I don't know where we're gonna go from here, I guess is the problem.
And the other thing I don't understand is why I've had to try to get a meeting for so long, because it's my understanding from reading.
Supposed to be.
The laws in this state that the Disability Commission is also under the open meeting law.
Yes, yeah.
And they're required to have certain papers on file.
Supposed to have minutes.
So I went up this last week to get copies of minutes for the last three meetings to see what had been going on, and they informed me that they haven't got anything since 2006.
Oh, it's been, been after that, but besides the point, you are right.
Those are the files when I went up and I requested the files.
And I can tell you this, I could post a meeting, but for one person to go, you don't have a quorum. That's what we're up against, and I think I told you, and I know you did it for me, is to apply to get on that commission, which I know you did. And I don't know where that went, because I don't appoint.
I need qualifications and both last year and this year.
By file you do.
There's a request for people.
You know, so I mean, that's what we're up against. I think I said that at the last meeting we were here, is we have so many open positions that nobody volunteers for, and I do commend you for that, and I asked you to do that, and you did it for me. But that's what we're up against. We couldn't get a quorum to hold that meeting. I know Billy worked on it, and I will follow up with him again tonight. You know, and my understanding was, he was gonna email you, and I don't know if you ever got anything from him.
I'd never get anything.
Because that was our conversation last time, if you.
I've been checking every day. I was promised, he said that I would have the meeting by the end of the month.
I think he said Thursday, I forget the date.
He said by the end of the month.
So, and I will follow up with him, Johnny, you're right. But I've done everything I can.
The reason I want the meeting is because what you're being told and what I'm being told has been two different things. Is when I call them, I tell them the situation that I run into, and they're telling me that the grills can't be out there because of the added things that are happening. Because the thing is, if the grills weren't there, this picture, we would have had the things over further, and they would have been doing the work in an accepted area, and the path of travel would have remained open the entire time.
Oh, I agree with you. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about leaving the stuff on the sidewalk, and he knows that.
The decision from the state was, if they continued to violate, that the grills had to be removed.
And again, again.
This is from the AAB. But we're talking, I've been talking federal law, and you're referring stuff to a state that, you're trying to apply state law to a federal.
No, I think you're wrong. I think, you know, in my conversation with the Department of Justice, which I did do, we had that conversation, and it's two different things. And I offered to make that phone call with you, have I not?
I offered that. I've got copies of the emails where I sent them.
I mean, so I don't have an issue with that. I mean, you know, and you said, "Well, I'd rather do it at one of your meetings." So that's where we left it.
I'd rather do it with the whole board, because that way there, everybody's on the same page, and this would have been done in over.
I understand, but I made the offer to you, and I'll still make that offer any day you wanna do it. I don't have a problem with it.
This is the first time you've made this offer, because I made the offer.
No, you wanted, you did. And you wanted to do it with the whole committee.
Right, because at this point, it's, it seems like every time, when I'm sending you emails saying that it's ADA, which is federal, it should not be being referred to Boston. The state does not have authority over federal.
Absolutely, they don't. I don't think we ever argued that with you. You know, it's no different than, than, you know, our enforcement officer is our building inspector, which I've sat down there several times, as you know, or you should know.
I would assume you have, I don't know.
Well, I think if you look through your emails, there's conversations of that.
Right, there's conversations where I was told that we go owns half the sidewalk, which they don't.
I don't think anybody said half the sidewalk, but.
Actually, I've still got the emails, I can print them out and bring them to the next meeting if you want.
I don't think it came from me.
All right, well, I don't.
That being said, my office still stands, just like it always has.
That's what I wanna do. That's what I've been saying for.
You got my email, pick the time, and I'll be there, you know that. I've never not answered you, ever.
There's been a few, but it's possible emails could have gotten lost in the way, but.
John, the one thing about me, it doesn't matter if it's controversy or whatever, I don't run away, I take it head-on, just like I did with you, and I'm more than willing to do that.
All right. Okay, so the next step is we gotta get this man in front of the Disability Commission and get that meeting taken care of. I don't know if, you have a job, Gary, you did want Adam's office to help get these people contacted the rest of the board, or, and Shemeth, or?
I'll refer to Billy to resend that email.
All right, I don't think anyone's purposely avoiding you, sir, we're, we'll get this meeting, we'll get this meeting together.
I understand what you're saying, it's just at this point, it's dragged on way too long.
All right, well, we'll take another shot, this'll get this, we'll get this done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else that could be heard? All right. Communications. We did have the Vets Riders, but we have a representative from the Vets Riders this evening?
No.
Well, they do have their Vietnam ride happening Friday and Saturday. I thought we'd have someone here to, to okay the permit, but that's all I had in the package, was that ride's going on this weekend.
Didn't we do that last time with Jerry?
Yeah, Jerry was saying, I thought we did all that. Jerry and that.
They just wanted us to announce that they were doing it, I think.
From the communication, I can't tell, is there, refers to food and music, is that, you know, following?
I think it's back at the Post at 6.
Yeah, it's after the ride, John.
Okay.
Which takes place in the lower parking lot there.
And then they got permission to park over in the, was it church parking lot?
Yeah, the only thing we didn't get was the, they need a parade permit, which is leading.
Which we, which we're gonna address tonight.
So the food is Friday night, then?
No, it's after the ride.
After the ride, okay. It's, it was not clear from the post.
They do have a bike night on Friday, so I think they oughta show.
The ride is actually Saturday morning, meet at the, the high school, and then when you come back, the barbecue and stuff is after.
Tony's right, their parade permit was on our agenda, I believe.
Yes, it is. All right. Okay. All right. So we'll address that again as a new business item. It's, I apologize for the delay, we're supposed to have a 605 public hearing. Next on the agenda is the Public Hearing for New Alcohol License for, pardon my pronunciation here, but UGIA, UGIA weed, wait, for all alcohol beverages license for Yamato Asian Bistro Incorporated, 62 West Main Street. Welcome. So you're opening up a new business at that location?
Yes. It will be Japanese, all sorts, variety of Asian, so major with sushi, sushi, Chinese, Vietnamese, Thai food, and a full bar, hopefully.
As far as the full bar, we did have one item outstanding that was tips training, correct?
Yes.
Certification?
I do have the certification, but 'cause we have other restaurants, I've been moving it around, so I don't know, I'm still searching for where it is. But I should have it, and I'll fax it over, email it to Deborah.
Okay.
Hopefully this week I'll get it done.
Any questions from the board?
So you have, you have other comparable restaurants, the same, similar menu line and form?
Yeah, if you, like Yamato Steakhouse, we, the first one was in Davio, Connecticut. Second one was in Smithsfield, Rhode Island. Third is in Tonton, Mass, and the current one is in Brockton, Mass. But those are just Japanese and hibachi. This one will be more of Asian and Japanese instead of, we do have hibachi, but you will be in the kitchen instead of out, open.
Oh, you'll have hibachi as well, or?
It'd be in the kitchen, but you won't have, we don't have the shelves in the dining area.
Great. It seems a lot, a lot of changes on the floor plan here from the places I've frequented there. When do you plan to open up?
Hopefully, hopefully end of this year. So we're having, I had people come, the plumbers and electricians, 'cause we need to get those done before the renovation, and, so hopefully you go faster, 'cause it's already, like, there's some stuff that's already there, so we really don't have to do major works. Just cleaning the fridge and the kitchen, taking the dining room, fixing, shouldn't take that. Hopefully doesn't take that.
Once again, how many restaurants are in your corporation?
This is individual corporate. You wouldn't belong to the other ones, but the owner, co-owner that's with me owns the other ones.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we're always, you know, happy when people select Spencer as a place to set up a new business. I would be useful for the board to know, and I think for the, you know, for the people watching to know, what drew you to Spencer? I mean, this particular location, is it, you have some knowledge of the area, or what was the, what brought Spencer?
Truthfully, 'cause the buffet was already there. It was a cheap investment for us to go in and renovate, instead of a new, you know, brand-new place where we have to cook. Yes. There was more investments, and we did a little bit searching, there is really armed Japanese restaurant between the two towns. And I hope with us coming in, like, not just us, but like, I hope the town do get better. I hope in general, everybody gets better. He was scaring me with the other talking.
What did he try to say?
He just said, "Things don't get better," though.
No.
Let's not go for businesses.
Don't worry about him, don't listen to him, nobody does.
But yeah, we're moving to the town, and hopefully it'll be a family with the towns.
Great. Well, one thing that, certainly one of Spencer's assets, so that's the food selection in town, the restaurants, who really have some well-known restaurants that people, you know, come a long distance for, so I hope you, you join a, you know, join a group of restaurants that are already attracting people from a distance, so we wish you luck and, yeah, hope it succeeds.
Like, from my, what I understood with what happened with the restaurant before the buffet, we're not gonna have an issue just as. I want to keep all the customers, everybody, you know, wealthy, like, healthy environment, so there won't be any problem with those.
That was one of my questions, is no tie-in to the last, okay?
No. No, I was talking to the Board of Health, because I was down there getting the application, and he was telling me about those. I told him, I was like, no, it's not gonna happen, you don't want bugs, mice, it's, like, it's people's health, you're putting food in your mouth, you don't want those stuff. I wouldn't want to eat my food.
I think the public would be very good to hear that you're gonna avoid bugs and mice in Europe.
No, because that's what I heard, that's what happened last time, that's what he told me.
Yep.
Mr. Lee, so.
Well, there are a lot of, you know, a lot of Asian buffets, but you know, it sounds like you've got a unique, you know, a unique menu to offer, so, you know, I'll put, stretch it forward.
I just, I just want you to clarify something for me, just because, and it may just be a slip, but you said the other guy with you owns the other restaurant, so this is separate?
Well...
I think he's referring specifically to a line in the application where you state you're the president and 100% of stock ownership.
Yes, he is like the, on the lease, I'm the 100% president, and he's a guarantor.
Okay.
So he'll guarantee me through everything, like, I'm the lease I have right here, he's a guarantor.
That's fine.
That's right, that's right.
But he owns all the other ones, even the buffet in Cranston, Rhode Island, that's currently run.
So if he's a guarantor, he must be making sure you're making it.
He's working for me today, so he's not here. He has to work at the restaurant.
That's my only question.
This is a public hearing, does anyone have questions in the audience? Great.
We don't want to scare her anymore, if I scare her already.
Yes, yes, yes. There are no, no questions or comments from both.
Right, don't take them.
Should I close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 6:30. What's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve subject to the tip certification.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Do we have any further questions?
The only thing I would ask is, even though you can email the tip certification so that we have it on file, I would like you to send the actual copy.
Well, I can come by and drop it off in the morning, I know Deborah works from Monday through Wednesday.
It's easier, so it's all in the files.
I'll come by later.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, congratulations. Good luck. Next item on the agenda is the parade permit for the American Legion Riders, 2:00 PM on Saturday, August 16th, 2014. This is the, the second day of their festivities, it's a parade. You know a lot about this, but one more time, it says, it says 2:00 PM here, they're lining up at 11:00?
Yeah, at the high school.
Yeah. So...
We should be back around 2:00, I think. Usually takes about three hours when we go for the ride.
Okay, so after that, that's when everyone meets at the Legion?
Right, yeah.
Parking at church is allowed?
Yeah.
They barbecue on the back?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it always a great event?
This is, what, 30 years?
It's a different war of years, don't they have a different...
You get filed for the permit?
This year's for, did they file?
Yes, well, they gave me a letter, and then I'll mail them.
The other.
The other, yeah.
Okay. Do we need to put contingencies in the, in the motion? We're all set, disprove it? Okay. All right, any questions from the board on this?
No.
All right.
I think we should amend it from, for 11:00 versus 2:00.
You want to amend it for 11:00? Do we need, do you need police? It says at 11:00?
It says it's 11:00 at 11:00.
Is it statin' 11:00, Bo, or is it?
Post it at 11:00 from the high school and get back around 2:00.
All right, it says 2:00 PM on Saturday, so...
Oh, okay.
So we'll amend the...
So amend the motion to be 11:00 AM?
Okay. Okay, so we amend the motion, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Without any here any questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll just amend that permit to be 11:00 AM on the 16th. Very good. Next item, appoint Steven Tyler as Selectman Delegate for CMR PC and James Willam as alternate delegate, so...
Mr. Chairman, Steve's done this before, I guess, so it changes James being the alternate. So on that, I'd make a motion to appoint Steve Tyler as a delegate for the CMR PC and James Willam as the alternate.
I have a motion, I have a second.
A second.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So done. Full business. Discussion of timeline for revised fiscal year 2015 budget process. Just included in our package, just where we are on the dates of, we've, on August 21st, we, special town meeting to adopt revised Spencer's Brookfield Regional School District Assessment. We set the ballot on 28th, September 2nd through the 30th, and audit is completed and values, new growth and free cash certified from Mass. Department of Revenue. And after that, the, this board sets the town meeting warrant, and the special election will be November 4th. And then we'll have a special town meeting after to adjust the fiscal year 2015 budget. We'll have a tax classification here on the 17th. December 1st through 5th, Mass. Department of Revenue sets the fiscal year 2015 tax rate, and December 8th through 19th, we get the actual tax bills out to the public. So that's the calendar. I think we'll hold any questions we have to our next meeting, the administrators in attendance, but those are the dates on the revised calendar. Okay? Board liaison reports. Board assignments, we have a list of board assignments.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
On the parade thing, I just got a thing that says that after the ride, like we did last year for Shalafu, we started at the Highway Garage and we came back up through town after the ride. That's what we did for Matt Shalafu when we did that.
Okay.
I believe that's the thing, it's not...
What you want to do?
Yeah, I think it's on, after the ride, we actually have the parade, which starts at the Highway Garage and goes up to the American Legion like we did last year, now that I was reminded of it, you know, I'm a little old.
Is that what that says on the thing?
Yeah.
I just saw him, so that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's what we did last year with Matt, so, we started down there and came up, so.
So I guess if they're doing a bike ride, and we don't really know what time they're gonna hit town?
Yeah.
Because they do it right after?
Right.
Does it really matter if we do it earlier, just to be safe?
Well, I mean, you amended the motion there, so I don't know if you want to, for the parade, it isn't when we leave, it's when we come back.
What if, and Brent made a good point, why don't we just approve the parade and not put a time?
That would be easy, then we don't have to worry about it, yeah.
I would, I would, who made that last motion?
Make a motion to strike the last motion.
I would rescind that last motion, and then, that would be my motion to rescind that one.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to rescind the motion for the American Legion Riders Parade Permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve a parade permit for the American Legion.
And for that, we do not need a time?
No.
I have a motion on the floor, a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Do we at least need to put down a day? Should we put the 16th?
We know it's happening on the 16th.
The day is on, on request, it's August 16th.
I, I believe she is right, that it is, because that's what we did last time.
Yeah, she probably is.
I may be wrong, so.
And Brent, it just makes sure that the police department does know the time.
Yeah.
So it's...
Okay, all those in favor?
I trust the report.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we got that one.
Yeah, we got that one.
All right, thanks, Bo. In your package, you'll see that there's a list of the existing board assignments. Number one, we've got to assign the ones that have Mr. Berthium's name on them, and if anyone has a desire to, to have a, have a liaison position that was already assigned, I'm trying to find mine.
This is where I missed on, expertise in the business.
What does he have, Gary?
We have Board of Health, Conservation Commission, we have the High School Building Committee, which is dissolved now, is it not?
Yeah, so that's, don't worry about that.
So we can take that. We have Otis, Planning Board, Zoning Board.
Well, first of all, I'll, I'll ask Chris, here we go.
Rookie.
Here we go.
I wonder who that is.
Chris, you, you want to make it easy and take up those assignments?
I'll take them.
Is everyone happy with their current committee assignments and...
I'll take the Otis if you want. All right.
Okay.
So, so Bo will take Otis?
I'm in the harassment mode most of the time anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm fine, I mean, if nobody else has any issues with it.
So we have Chris taking, you have that spreadsheet, so Chris will take Donnie's, and Bo will take Otis off of, off of Chris, okay?
And I'll send you an updated list.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Worcester County Selectmen's Association voting and alternate Yeah, I think so, okay. Maybe the vice chair, okay. All right, you, you have motion for naming?
Mr. Chairman, we need to name the voting member, I reckon, I would nominate you to be the first member, member of record.
That's, I'll, I'll accept. Does someone want to be the alternate on the board? I'll throw it to the vice chair first, if you want to be the alternate voter, or you got enough on your plate?
Yeah, I got plenty going right now.
What is the schedule? Do you know, is it, are they quarterly meetings typically, Tony?
We don't have the schedule, we'll clarify that.
I don't think it's a huge commitment of time.
No, I'd be happy to, to serve as an alternate.
Okay. All right, so we have the, the, the voting and the alternate voting members. Do I have a motion, just a little bit official?
I make a motion to nominate, to nominate Mr. Pepe and Mr. Stevens, is he alternate?
Okay, we have a second, any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? As far as liaison, the, again, just FYI, the Sock the Block will be coming up in front of us next week.
Well, good.
I've requested that the, the draft RFP gets sent out to you guys, so you could review it. There may be a few bumps in the road we're gonna address next week.
You're in request, Michelle would be, right?
Yeah, Michelle was already planning to come, come out, so that's on, that's on our agenda next week. Okay. Next item, citizens input, anyone have to come forward and be heard?
Second shot.
Al, you've been awful quiet, we haven't heard from you in a long time.
Building office coming.
Oh, I tell you.
They'll let loose.
Someone stole your thunder, I think.
They'll let loose.
I'm giving a couple of weeks for something to happen.
All right, wonderful. Stay tuned, folks, for that. All right, hearing nothing. Board member and staff comments, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I spent last Friday at the high school painting, if anybody got an opportunity to see it, the orange versus the blue that was out there. You know, we started 9:00 in the morning, Kyle came a little late, but it really came out good, you know, Dave, Ashan, you know, he put it together, along with the help of Bob Server and Paul Fornia. You know, we had 20 volunteers, I think, in the morning when we first started, so it was a lot of work, and we're still not done, but, you know, kudos to those guys, because it made a big difference in the building. And when you go inside, even all that blue that used to be in there is now orange and black, every door. You know, and hats off to the Worcester County Sheriff, he had some people show up, they painted the hallway down by the gym, if you get a chance, they did a great job. So my hat's off to those guys for putting that together. Just a good turnout.
Excellent, excellent. I'd like to make a, a quick comment. I think we all know next, coming weeks, we will be putting together presentations on this override. I anticipate going on with the administrator for just a override of the, of the review of the articles. We may, we're still discussions how, how that's gonna look, whether we bring department heads back in to really, you know, explain to the public what these overrides are for, and the services that are critical and must be funded through this override. So it's time to get out there and explain what this is all about, and clarify issues that the public may have with the whole.
And Pat brought up good questions, the same question John brought up last time, so I mean, hopefully we get clarification. Aaron, when can we do the first, the 8?
Do you want to do something in the studio?
I mean, I think it'd be a great opportunity if we kick that back off, and I can get the chairman there.
I want to do a, want to kick on, show off again. Yes, yeah, the 8 should...
I mean, we, we're gonna do the first Monday, but it's September 1st, and that just falls wrong, so, you know, try to coordinate it. Tony, if you could talk to Adam to see if that works, I think that's a great place for this to start off.
Great, great. Just getting the word out to the public.
I appreciate that, Tony, because that would work out.
Super. Anything else? I met with MPC guys about the boiler, and they're willing to work the way we want them to do it. I'm waiting for the engineer, he met with us, and he's supposed to get back to me by the third week in August, and, but I'm still waiting on the gas company to get that across Main Street into our yard. So that's kind of the holdup right now. Those guys are ready to go as soon as we get the gas on the property, and then we're gonna start ripping this thing out and get going, but the gas is holding itself right now.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question about progress at the transfer station, you reported on the, on the slabs and all of those.
Yeah, we got the slabs in, they're all set, the wiring has been run underground to the building. Tony's just gotta finish up the inside wiring and put the switches outside.
And we're waiting on the other compactor, correct?
Well, we're waiting, well, the compactor that we audited isn't gonna be here till sometime in middle September. The other one was supposed to be here July 1st, so I brought that up to Steve, so he was supposed to get ahold of Casella and find out why, but we're working on Grant Street right now, we're trying to get that, it was supposed to be paved today, but now it's put off to Friday.
It's the rain.
So, yeah, with the rain coming, so we got, we're hiring another outside contractor to do the, finish the paving down to the transfer station, and as soon as that's squared away, then we're gonna have Casella bring in the other one, then we can start doing the single stream instead of the, they're still doing it the other way right now, it's kind of a mess down there, so give us another, hopefully another two or three weeks, and if we can get Casella to bring that other compactor in, then we can get going on a single stream and get that area cleaned up down there.
So, just so people understand, so we're taking all the, the consumable, or recyclables that we've done in the past in, in the same location?
It goes in one hopper now, everything, cardboard.
In, in the future, yes, but right now?
Right now, they're still doing it the way they were before.
Before it was before.
Okay, all right.
You know, with the cardboard and separate everything.
Oh, those, those, it's one issue.
We still have the dumpsters down there, so we're using them, but we're trying to get the, yeah, we get the cement work all done, now we gotta fill in all around, and Tony's gonna finish the wiring, and then Casella, I talked to Steve last week, and he was gonna call him and tell him he'd like to have him get that in here, so we could get going, and I haven't heard back yet, so I don't know if that's, you know, I said if there's a little bit of a cost, we'll pay the little bit of cost, if that's what we're gonna do, to get this thing up and running, because we're supposed to have it for, you know, July 1st, and here it is, second week in August, so.
Okay.
We're trying to get it for...
If you could ask the town administrator to inform the board exactly where we stand, I know Bo and I have been down there, you know, but I think it's important the whole board understands where they're at.
We'd like Adam to get a report from the, the departments that had, that managed the transfer station, to get an update where we stand, and not just on the upgrades, but probably numbers.
You need to know about this building and so.
Right. I'd also like to see trends on, on stickers and so forth.
I asked for that, so you guys...
Yeah, that should be, well, yeah, I should have included in any presentation.
The stickers are down quite a bit.
Okay. All righty. So we can make sure Adam takes, takes care of that for us when he returns? All right. Anything else, guys? Okay, hearing nothing, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn, I have a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, we'll see you all, all on August 18th at 6:00 PM for the Board of Selectmen Workshop being held in this, in this room, McCourt Social Hall. Thank you very much, good evening.